Let's get going because we're 32 minutes behind. We'll make up some time hopefully here.
To get you back on track.
Okay. I don't have a script. All right, you have a strategic plan update for us?
I do have a strategic plan update for you.
Are you going to be strategic?
I'm going to do my very best.
In your plan to deliver it to us?
Yes, I am. I understand our time constraint, so try to be as succinct as possible. One, it's very much appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update. Dr. Garza felt like the timing for that was very good because we're close to awarding RFP. I'll come back a little bit with the timeline with that. But just to provide some context today, I marvel at my boss and what she's been able to do since she arrived in Fairfax with her external engagement with the Listening Tours. I think she's met with almost every civic organization at least once. There's been a lot of outreach about FCPS, both about what we do well and those things that we'd like to work on improving. I know that Dr. Garza has a binder with all those suggestions that she's received, and it's things that we've engaged at LT. As a compendium to that piece, way back at the beginning of this fiscal year, Dr. Garza asked me to look at helping us launch an RFP around a strategic plan process to begin to look at the work we do and to review the key pieces that we have. We did put that out. I was very pleased we had a broad number of vendors that responded to be our partners. I think there were eight or nine groups that originally submitted. And to look at that, and I think it did encompass a lot of, we did get a lot of different good, solid ideas about how to do that. We have whittled down. We did ask the finalists to come back and present to us around some key questions that we had. And recently, over the last week or so, we've been trying to finalize the pricing and those pieces, which I'm hopeful that we'll be able to share our partner vendor with you by the end of this week. The 21st of February is our absolute date that it definitely will be done by then. So as a lead up to that, I wanted to spend a few minutes of today to establish some context to build off the community outreach that Dr. Garza has already initiated. And Marilyn, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, I think I'll just talk from it.
Mr. Paris, I might add a couple of things.
Sure, go ahead.
Just for the benefit of the community. You know, last July, I think it was, we had a retreat, maybe July, August, something like that, where we, you all established priorities for the division. One of the priorities that you established for me was that you all wanted a long-range strategic plan. So there were some folks that have the impression that this is Karen Garza's idea to have a long-range strategic plan. I think it's a very important thing and something I certainly endorse and think that we should do, but this has really been something that this board as a whole has established as a priority. With that being said, it was also reflected in the Gibson report that we needed a long-range strategic plan with annual specific targets and very specific measures. So we've even had outside groups say, you know what, folks? You need a long-range, very focused strategic plan. And so just for the benefit of the community, I think it's very important that we establish that this is the direction this board has set, and of course, others that are experts have identified this something that would make us even better as an organization. When a strategic plan is being developed, it's beneficial to have a starting point, endpoint, an end game essentially. And so we started this process essentially with a portrait, definition around the portrait of a graduate. So that will be an important piece as we move forward around what is the community expective at school? So what do we want our graduates to know and be able to do when they complete high school? And that will help us think about the future in terms of the, you know, FCPS in 2020, if you will. So I just felt like it was important for, in terms of a parameter about why we're doing the work that we're doing, and I wanted to set that stage. Dan has been instrumental, really, really happy to have him serving as the interim deputy superintendent, doing a great job with that work, as complex and as difficult as it is. And he's really done a wonderful job in helping articulate this work and helping getting people on board to this direction. So I give him a lot of credit. So I'm going to pass it back to you.
Thanks. And it definitely is exciting work. It's the right work to be doing. You know, when I look at the title slide, I think the key word that jumps out to me is aligning. So we have a lot of great things in Fairfax that we've developed over time. We certainly have things that we need to work on. And many of the pieces that we have need to continue to be successful already there. So we just have to align them and tighten them up and to spend some time with the things that we would all like to do a little bit better.
I'm just going to move the mic.
Sure. Thank you for all your help. As Dr. Garza mentioned, we started with Portrait of Graduate work. This was a community of over 70 members that represented all stakeholders, including teachers and parents and the business community, principals. It was a broad swath of folks from Fairfax to look at kind of the summative attributes and qualities that we would hope to aspire to, to deliver to our graduates. And from that work, it was great discussion. We met four or five, I think, five times, the final time to kind of get together and look at our work. I think everyone on that group was very excited about the outcome of that. And it also became apparent to us that this was the right time to come back and look at where we are in Fairfax, to take advantage of our strengths and attributes and look at, you know, look at doing some things differently into the future. The next five slides that I'm going to show you are all attempting to communicate the exact same thing. I put them there because I think it's important to look at the perspective or the stakeholder group when you consider this work. And this first slide that I put up there, in my own thinking, is the most important one. This is how I was taught as a teacher and most of us in Fairfax, to look at the work that we do. And this is a backwards design process around the four essential questions that you need to do the work well in the classroom. And the reason I think it's the right perspective to open with is because whatever we do with our strategic planning process, it should support the work in the classroom, right? And this viewpoint and making sure that we have strong input from those stakeholder groups that are represented in the classroom, which are the teachers and the students and the families that represent them, is key. So in the backwards design model, when we look at planning for the classroom, and I would argue that the planning process for teachers in the classroom is not so much different in function to what we're going to do as a division, as it is in scope. So a teacher would ask themselves these four basic questions in the planning process. What do we want all students to know and be able to do? A lot of teams define that as unwrapping standards or revisiting your program of studies. The second question that you would ask yourself is what evidence would we accept that kids know that and are able to do it? And as a teacher, you would craft those assessments and put those into your plan. Then you would look at those outcomes that you were pursuing and determine the best strategies that you would use to produce those outcomes. And the final step in the planning process in this direction, you would look to say, okay, at the end, you're going to have three groups of kids. You're going to have some that are about what you expected them to be. You're going to have some that probably already had a good background knowledge in what you're trying to teach them, how are you going to help them excel and extend? And you're going to have some kids that are going to need to be scaffolded for, for a little extra time and support to be successful. So you should, in your planning, take into account that those would be three realities that will be a result of what you deliver. When you go to deliver your instruction, it works in reverse. You think about your classroom. You say, okay, which kids do I think are going to be well positioned to receive this new information? Who might need a little extra time and support? Then you consider what strategies that you would deliver. You assess it at the end, and then you compare it to the expected outcomes and say, did my classroom reach them? So this exact same framework is what a teacher does, and it's what we should do within the division at a different level of scope to make sure we're supporting that work properly. This is how we talk about it when we come into our leadership team, and these are pieces that already exist. So the, we're great at acronyms in Fairfax, so we have the POG, which is Portrait of a Graduate, which was just a look at what do we want all kids to know and be able to do, or one treatment of that. Then the second connected box is SAG. Those are Student Achievement Goals, which are what evidence would we accept that kids actually know and are able to do that, which are pieces that we have existing in their current iteration. And this TOA, or Theory of Action, or Theory of Change, right? That may be new for some folks, but basically what your theory of change is, is just an if-then statement. If these are the outcomes that we're pursuing for the students in Fairfax County, then what would we have to do to produce those outcomes? And what might we do better than we're currently doing? So this notion of a theory of change shows up several different times in your planning process. And the last one, the strategic plan, is a build-out of what you would do to set up teachers and students for success in the classroom. And that strategic plan should be a long-term plan, probably a three-to-five-year plan to build out these elements and stay, have the self-discipline to stay with it, to produce them in a way that they would be most helpful to teachers and students. This next slide, I apologize that it's a little bit blurry because I had to snag it from your school board retreat, and when, which just occurred at the end of last month. And we looked at many of these same components, the exact same planning pieces that we talked about before. And I like this slide because it shows the continuum from execution and back to our entry point, that whatever we do with our strategic plan should show up and impact the classroom and the students that are in there. That's the execution point. So if it's not doable, not reasonable and doable, then we really need to think it to make sure that we put it there. At the top of this, you have the enter into the strategic direction. And this slide speaks to there's some things that are more, you know, that we all engage in all parts of these, but some of them with strategic direction are more appropriate at a board level. And some of the inputs that you need at the execution level are more important to listen to the teacher and the schools and how that actually works from that end of the equation. I've been informed that this slide is confusing, and thanks to our fair and balanced media community for pointing that out to me. What I was trying to do was put together the individual, this one right here, to put together the individual pieces of what we talked about, which I believe you would find in most strategic plan deployments. You know, if you look around to the clues in your room, when you come in the door, you see the mission statement for FCPS on the wall. We have our belief statements over here, our vision statement there, and our strategic goals. These are all components that are within a strategic planning process. There are a couple of things here that probably do bear exploration, further exploration, this idea of parameters. So whenever you go into a planning process, you have to be respectful of the current realities that you're dealing with. So I would suggest that our parameters would include our current budget situation, the implications that that has. I think our current parameters would include the challenges we have with teacher workload. I think those parameters would include some shifting legislative requirements and demands that are placed on our system. So all of these things you have to take into context. You see the little green weird-shaped box with the theory of change means that as we go through this process, asking ourselves if we want this, then how would we have to perform to make that happen? This idea of beliefs as an entry point and for establishing your strategic direction, having done this work in the classroom and having done this work at a school, if you don't get those assumptions right from the beginning and make sure that you have your community, all stakeholders in your community in the beliefs part, then everything you do after that will be wrong. That's what Peter Drucker says. And I believe that to be true. So making sure you take the time, right? And part of this work of what we would do would go back and look at our beliefs. Right now, the ones that are on the wall. We believe in our children. We believe in our teachers. I believe in all those things, but can you go deeper? So if you took a belief statement that said something, which I think many people in our system do believe, is that inside each kid is a unique individual potential to contribute something great. And it's our shared responsibility to help them find their talents and their passions to achieve it. If that's your belief statement, now that starts to shape policy and direction. If your belief statement is, I believe that strong collaborative cultures and climates produce the best results for students, now that, those kinds of beliefs begin to shape policy. So when we go back and we look at these steps and do our work, I think we should go deeply into those kinds of conversations. And if that is what you believe, then it goes back to your assessment, balanced assessment framework, which starts with Portrait of a Graduate and the previous work that we've done. We've done some fine work. We've learned some systems thinking from what we've done, but we need more clarity in this area. I would argue that this is the most important work that we will probably do in the immediate future, is getting square across all stakeholders as to what this means. Okay? Popem says that your standards are defined by how you assess them. So getting this right is really important. Okay? And when I look at what we do with assessment toward a balanced assessment framework, it's pretty clear to me that most people believe that the word balance is not in our assessment framework, that we've been heavily led in a, you know, to a lot of a single type of assessment, which most researchers would say is problematic, that you should have a more diversified portfolio. I also believe that we're at critical mass. When you talk to teachers, my wife's a fourth grade teacher, she will tell you that we do a lot of assessment, and she views it as accountability. And we need to bring what we do with assessment back inside the classroom in the power of the teacher. So this work right here, if we get anything else right, I hope that that's the piece, that we take the time to get stakeholder input to get that right. Then it moves itself down into goals, into specific strategies. Okay? And I think your strategy should be limited. You know, I've taken some time to think about this, that, you know, of course, we want to do all things for all people, but if you do that, then it diffuses your impact. So are there three to five things we could really lock ourselves in to as a division to build out, to make sure we do them really well, and make sure that all our teachers and our schools can do these things really well? And can we get our collective best thinking as to what those are? If we do that, we're going to move the district even further in a positive direction than it is. There's a dotted line at the end of this. One of the things that I would, and I use that line, or folks that do this kind of strategic planning for a living use that dotted line, to suggest that there is strategic action and there is tactical action. A tactical action is how you actually execute it at the school level. Okay? So when I look at our past planning efforts, somebody that's been around for a while, I would say two things that we could do better. We could make sure that we have a lot of stakeholder input into designing this and that it doesn't just flow top-down, that it best comes both directions, bottom-up and top-down, and families have input too. And take the time, not to be in a hurry, to make sure that we get that input right. And to clarify for schools, these, you know, the difference between this is our strategic direction and this is what tactical autonomy you have within it to make it your own, because I think people have strategy, they have to be able to make it their own or like, this is how it should look in my classroom, this is how it should look in my school. So sorting out a strategic direction and providing clarity around tactical autonomy in a limited way that we can do this, that's exciting work, really exciting work, and it deserves our time and attention to make sure that we get our best collective thinking about how to do it. So in moving forward with this work, what we try to do, this is another way of looking at it, this is just putting it into RFP speak, right? This is a way these items were written in large measure to seek out partners for this. And, you know, one of the things, I think, the benefit of having a partner, so you, some might say, why don't we just do this in-house? You know what to do here. You know, we know what to do. We've done this before. I think when you have an outside partner that helps you, leads you to make sure that you've examined all perspectives, and you have somebody to facilitate from the outside, it helps you be a participant in the process itself, which is really important that we're all in this conversation. So looking for a partner that would support us in that, that has some expertise to offer, particularly around what to do with outcomes and how we might arrive at a more compelling place is really important. And I'm excited about where we are. So the next steps in this, as I said, by Friday, the earliest would be this Friday, the latest would be next Friday, that we'll be able to announce the outcome from the RFP. And then I believe we would engage in these steps moving forward as an organization. And I think we embrace it as the most important work that we have to do in front of us. So that's where we are, and I open it up to your questions or comments.
So I have Ms. Hines, then Ms. Evans, then Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I particularly appreciate the way you said over and over and over again that we need to make sure we have all the stakeholders in the conversation, we need to make sure we have the classroom at the table, and that it's an up-down, not a top-down. That's wonderful. So just from my perspective as a board member, when I look at the RFP speak version and it says, work with school board members and others who may be identified, that phrase, others who may be identified, comes up a few times, but from what I hear you saying, I'm anticipating that that will be teachers, students, and even though the Portrait of a Graduate Committee did some really good work, and we have to, definitely are going to honor what they did, that we're just going to bring as much as possible the whole community into the rest of the conversation. It sounds like that's where we're headed.
That is where we're heading. Okay.
I think the Portrait of a Graduate is a perfect example of where you can get when you take the time, as Dan pointed out earlier, to engage people in helping to design the work. As I've told the team before, we could have gotten four, or five, or six people in the leadership team in a room for a day and probably could have written a Portrait of a Graduate. But there's real power, power in involving lots of stakeholders, having broad representation, and, you know, and ownership is created as a result. As soon as we're able to announce who the, who our partner, strategic partner will be in helping us develop this, we want to very soon thereafter have them come in and present to the school board and really talk through their process, their recommended process, how they would recommend to you all to engage the broader community. So I think in the very near future, we'd hope to be able to tell you today, but negotiations are still underway. But I think they'll be able to come in and lay out the whole strategy, the whole timeline, and what it will take to get us to completion on this.
Yeah, and I think that the, how you engage folks is in that operational plan. And, you know, I think like anything worth doing, when you enter into the work, you learn something, right? So I learned like creating slides to say, okay, this was clear to me when I put it on there, but there are other people that might feel differently, right? And when I say, you know, things like other, you know, the board and other people as appropriate, that means teachers to me because I have to eat at my dinner table every night, and I know if we didn't bring teachers to the table, I wouldn't be able to. So, you know, I would do some things differently in the wording, but I think in the, when we stuck this out there, I think it was clear to that community what we were talking about.
Okay, Ms. Hines, is that it?
Just one last thing. I think to be a little real on this as well, just to kind of restate what Dan said earlier, I do think, we've done great work in this system. I don't think always did our stakeholders feel that they had a say in that work. And it's not because, you know, we were, you know, we weren't, we didn't care. I just think that in Fairfax County Public Schools, when we want to get something done, we go and do it. And we were just meeting with some principals this week, and it was interesting, their observations about how much ownership or involvement they'd had in sitting direction. So I think if what we're hearing from our community and our constituents is they really want to have a say or kind of a place at the table at least, and I think moving forward, we've really got to honor that. And I know all of us buy and support that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. And that was one of my questions too. So thank you for elaborating on how we're going to involve more stakeholders. Just to follow up on our retreat where we had looked at the Portrait of the Graduate and we had come up with some thoughts too. Where does that stand? Are we, is that being amended? Are we going to see an amended version?
Yes, you will see an amended version, but we're not done. I think there's still opportunity to involve some more stakeholder.
Okay.
I'd like to see what the consultant will say about that particular work too. Does that need to be folded in with the opportunity of people engaging in that? So I, you know, I don't think we put that, a stamp on that and say, this is it until we all feel that it's there.
Okay, great. That was my only other question. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I think I just wanted to maybe get a little more certainty in perhaps the language and what we could do when I, and I really did appreciate, Mr. Paris, your humble remarks that, you know, we always do our best to convey our thinking and then, you know, people come back and say, hey, is this what you meant? So, but I know as a board and as a system, we've talked about it's our, it's not just our words, but our actions. And so when I think about that bullet number four, where it says, work with the leadership team, principals, and then others who may be identified, I would like my colleagues to consider the merits of it saying, work with the leadership team, principals, the teachers' associations, and others. Because that's an action that says, we are committed, we do recognize right from the get-go that, and again, it could say teachers, but I think if we're trying to bring to the table the people who communicate with the broadest number of teachers, it is our teachers' associations. But putting that in there now, what it says to the public is, our leadership team, in addition to our principals and our teachers, are what we view as our key stakeholders in this dialogue and this development. So as Ms. Hines was emphasizing, you know, we want it understood at the board level, who do we see as being at the table from the beginning to the end? So that's my proposal, just because I think it's really important sometimes to leave a work session like this saying, okay, we all agree to it, but what are, can we have consensus on what we're actually going to put in there?
Sure.
So Ms. Schultz, I don't know if it's just going to be as people take their turns, they can speak to my request.
Sure.
PowerPoint.
Right. I think what I try to do is, you know, like I said, if I had to go, if I could go back in time, I probably would change the language, it would be more explicit. And, you know, what I tried to do was honor what we put out in the RFP, you know, because this was a report on where we are with the RFP. But I can certainly tell you that our intentions, and if I have anything to do with it, it's going to be strongly voiced there. But I'm happy to go back as we move forward because I think part of the success of any strategic planning initiative is having the right public messaging around it, right? And how you deliver that message. So these are helpful pieces as we go forward to make sure that we're clear about what we're trying to do as an organization, we can make those changes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I thought it would be helpful just to have board consensus say, okay, if that, we're all in agreement with Mr. Paris and Dr. Garza, but where are we going to place it in there so that the public, they leave this work session along with us as board members and say, okay, we made that clear?
Well, if I, if I understood what Mr. Paris was trying to communicate, it's that this is a reflection of where we are in the RFP process, and this is the way the RFP was written. And so it's not so much that any stakeholder group is necessarily excluded from what will happen as the process unfolds, it's more that it just reflected what was in the RFP. So if he goes back and inserts it now, that wasn't in the RFP. Now, I can see that, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I can see that the point is to include those intentionally going forward, and I'm assuming Dr. Garza and Mr. Paris are hearing, you know, and I'm seeing heads shake. So to me, that's sort of like the will of the board.
And remember, you're going to get to meet with the vendor before they get started.
Right.
So you'll have a say in terms of the entire timeline, the entire process, who's involved. You'll have an opportunity to engage with the consultant on that.
So we just haven't start, we haven't set our beginning of going out into the community. Mr. McElveyn has a brief comment.
Yeah, I mean, what Elizabeth said was absolutely correct, that this was just the RFP language. And as part of the meeting with potential vendors, that was a key part in what we looked for, is willingness to engage with teachers.
No, I agree with everything what people are saying, but I maybe, I'm not being understood in my request. It happens sometimes when we come to a work session, we have a report, and we ask for a correction to be made. This doesn't say this is what our RFP was. It's saying components of the strategic plan. And it's my personal advocacy, and I thought from listening to Ms. Hines and Ms. Evans, that there might be value as we're trying to honor our teachers in this system, that even just inserting the words, teachers there for now, is a way, it's that, it's putting the marker down and saying, we know Mr. Paris meant to put that in there, then good, put it in there. So starting right now, today, it's there, it's clear, there's no misunderstanding. It's one word, but it speaks volumes of saying, there is respect, it is leadership team and principals to be cited in this, in this PowerPoint, because this is what the public's looking at. And until we get to the next step, I would be more comfortable seeing them there and stated. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Smith has a comment, just to Ms. McLaughlin's point.
I'm more comfortable with Ms. Schultz's comments about this. I think moving forward, we ensure that we have those groups, we'll have an opportunity to meet with the vendor. But I think at this point, I don't want to start listing groups. I kind of like that this language is more broad, and then we get to create this as we move forward. So my comfort level is not changing anything now.
Okay. Ms. Hines has a brief comment.
Really quickly, I, at some point, maybe we should just do a show of hands on this because I find myself agreeing with Ms. McLaughlin that throwing in the word teachers, you know, might be a good thing for us to do, since we know that they are probably the biggest group, interest group out there that, but, and my question for Mr. McElveyn, since you've been in on these conversations, do you think it would be? in on these conversations, do you think it would be inappropriate for us to put that in this? I mean, it wouldn't change the RFP.
My, my only comment is that this is over and done with, this language. And moving forward, the board is going to determine who we engage and how we engage them.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go back for just a moment, back to what Mr. Paris was saying. This is reporting on what happened during the RFP process, and we are going to set the tone of the strategic plan on a going-forward basis when we meet with the vendor. And I think that any language that's going to be a part of that strategic plan and communicating that strategic plan to the public will include the language that we agree to. And I think that Dr. Garza and Mr. Paris are clearly hearing at this point that, are you not, that we need to broaden or maybe more correctly have a degree of specificity that accurately reflects the nature of the strategic plan at the time that we establish it. This is not the going forward, this is what has happened up to this point. Mr. Velkoff has a quick comment.
But my, my quick comment on this specific point is, I think that, if I may, pressing this to the point of a vote, I think is potentially inventing a controversy where there is none. And I would, I agree with what Mrs. Schultz has been doing, and I hope we will take her guidance and accept that the folks who are in charge of the school system are going to do what they've been hearing.
Ms. McLaughlin, we've got others.
I understand, but I had put a request on the table, so I want to make sure people understand it. This is not the RFP. Mr. Paris was presenting update to the board on where things are. This speaks to what Mr. Paris was, again, trying to communicate where we are and where we're going with it. What he said was, had I thought about it, because it's his PowerPoint, and this PowerPoint is going to exist until we get to the next stage, I got to tell you, I can't believe we have to sit here and lobby for putting teachers here.
Ms. McLaughlin, hold on a second. Mr. Paris, did you not say that this is the language that was in the RFP?
Yeah, I drafted it from the.
Okay, so it is, it is the language that's from the RFP, and that was just made to present the slide.
So clearly then, if a mistake was made in the RFP, there's nothing wrong with fixing it in the slide.
It's not that it was a mistake. It's not that it was a mistake.
Well, not listing our teachers with leadership team and principals, I would see as a mistake.
Mr. Moon, you have a quick comment on this?
Just wanted to clarify that the, the topic we are dealing with at this work session is an update on RFP. So we are just dealing with what was in the RFP as opposed to the future directions we want to go after we select a vendor. Is that, isn't that what you are discussing today?
Agreed.
So I clearly understand that there is a undercurrent, and I think that, Dr. Garza, if we could put this in a next step, then we will be codifying the concern of the board that, at the time that we talk to the vendor, we'll make sure that we clarify that we're meaning to include teacher groups. And I would, I would personally advocate that we include parents. But we don't need to go down that road now, but if we put it in next steps, then we're reflecting the concern and we're acknowledging that on the going-forward basis, that will be a part of the strategic plan. Ms. Evans, is it, is this to this point?
And I would think that a next step might, if we all agree, that would have the sense of the board, that stakeholders, of course, include teachers, parents, and students. You know, if that's all we're trying to say, you know, I'm looking at this, and I realize it doesn't specifically say teachers, parents, and students. I think we all understand, though, that these are our stakeholders.
I agree. And I'm going to, I'm going to take the hit from Mr. Paris. When I, when we had our meeting manager pre-meeting, there were probably close to 10, maybe upwards of 12 slides. And in an effort to streamline and efficiently report, because we didn't have the actual vendor as of today, I am the one who selected and edited back the number of slides that would be presented so that this would be a, an update, but not be a comprehensive, detailed start of a strategic plan delivery that we will be at in the very near future. So, Dr. Garza, would that be okay, that we include teachers, parents, and students as a next step?
Yes, we can do that. I will tell you that I would say then, we also need business leaders, we need retired community. I think the point is, you all are going to have a say in who's going to be involved.
That's great. I think, then maybe, then maybe, then maybe just, I think briefly, that we will more comprehensively list stakeholder groups when we have a follow-up. We need to move on because we have other people on the list.
But Ms. Schultz, Ms. Schultz, I think what's being missed, no, what's being missed, Ms. Schultz, is that we have basically said, as a board, we value listing independently and right off the bat, leadership team and principals, but teachers are relegated to all other stakeholders and not highlighting them first and foremost is upsetting.
We're not saying that, we're not saying that because the RFP is over. We're, we're not, we are not doing that. And I do not believe from my pre-meeting as a meeting manager on this issue, that we are comprehensively covering everything that this board wills. I believe that we've clearly denoted that the will of the board is to include all stakeholder groups, and no one is subsuming a level of importance above anybody else. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you very much, and I will yield my time to others with greater wisdom.
Mr. Velkoff, you are on the list for other items.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Schultz. A couple of things. Mr. Paris, I really appreciated the examples that you gave when talking about the beliefs and how we, as representatives of the community, could communicate even more clearly in a way that makes it easier to actualize the achievement of what's behind those beliefs. So I, it gave me a lot to think about. And I just want to congratulate and thank all of the educators, Dr. Garza, and Mr. Paris, and everybody who's been involved in this, because you really have stepped back and looked at this issue holistically. I'll tell you, in July, when we got that work, that retreat, I was just bursting with, there's too many tests! There's too many tests! The teacher workload is terrible! Yada, yada, yada. Do something about it! And it would be very easy to respond to that kind of sentiment from us by reducing the number of tests, yada, 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 right? But what you did is you said, well, actually, we need to step back and look at the entire picture, of which, that's a symptom, but what's the real issue here? And what I see is, you've really gone back and you've looked at this from the standpoint of the vision, you've taken, you know, the patience, and you've recognized, so much to my appreciation, that we have a historic opportunity, and this is also a matter of historic importance. And as I've said before, I believe we're on the cusp of a renaissance in education, and I very much appreciate the direction that we're going here. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Reed and then Ms. Smith. I have Ms. Reed and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all the very insightful thoughts that went into this. And I liked all your graphics, Dan, everyone. And, you know, this has been a long time coming for some of us, so we're very thrilled to be at this point. And I'll just say, just keep my comments very brief. One, I wanted to reiterate something that you said, there was such good information in here. But two, two things that you said really struck me, strategic direction and tactical autonomy. And I don't want to lose sight of that, because to me, that sums up the whole thing right there. And to the point about the teachers and the, and the folks in the buildings, to me, that that's really important, that right from the beginning, we're acknowledging that. So kudos on that. The assumption, you mentioned parameters. I think of assumptions or operating environment, and you mentioned a few things, the budget and legislation workload. And I'm imagining that we'll have to spend quite a bit of time about other assumptions, like our enrollment, our diversity, the needs of our kids, et cetera. So that'll be, when that time comes, that'll be a very thought-provoking discussion, I'm sure, as we think about where we are today and what our world might look like, you know, down the road. And then last but not least, I wonder if you have contemplated linking the budget to the strategic planning exercise in some way. It's not mentioned here, per se, but that, to me, that's an important piece, is linking the amount of resources that we're spending as we, you know, as we venture forward.
I think the consultants, that would be definitely a place where we'll have to consider resource. But at the same time, I think if we do this well and we better align, I think in some cases, we may better execute our expenditure of resources if we're more aligned. So I think that definitely our consultants will facilitate that discussion about looking at the resources necessary to accomplish components of whatever's developed. But at the same time, I think we also, it provides an opportunity to redesign ourselves and better mobilize our resources around our priorities, because they'd be clearly articulated.
Right. And that's just to the point about accountability systems. I think to me, then, tying the priority to how much resources we're spending, you know, would be a logical way for us to go forward, right?
We really even like to get to the place that, once we identify, you know, this well-articulated plan with annual targets, we'd like to be in a position to even be able to demonstrate a return on investment. You know, we're spending money here, this is how, this is what we're getting as a result of it. You know, this is how many students participate in this, this is kind of our return on investment. We think there are ways that we can do that online, where our public can see that transparency and where we're spending money and the effect it's having on students in our system.
Hallelujah. And last but not least, best practices, is that something that's kind of inherent in here, is that we won't be starting with a blank piece of paper necessarily, but the consultant will be going around looking at what other smart people have done and.
Right. And I think that's where we put in to take a careful look at all the information we have about the pieces we want to keep, because we do do a lot of things right, and we want to keep those, and we have some that we want to improve. I, you know, look at the strategic planning process if we do this right. I think it has implications on almost every other conversation that I've been a part of with the board, right? From looking at how we do the work, and I think that it will help us immensely moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Reed. Ms. Strauss has decided to take back the time that she previously.
That's okay, you need to listen to everybody else. First, Dr. Garza, I want to thank you because this was, when you first came, was one of our top objectives, was to do, to go through a thorough strategic planning process. And I'm pleased that we are this far down the road, in spite of the budget, in spite of everything else. Clearly, I think we've made excellent progress. I'm looking forward to meeting, meeting the consultants. And in any kind of a business, particularly in education, where changes are constant. Our children change, the goals, the business community, the economics, the world demographics. And, and clearly, part of the impetus is, you had mentioned, Ted, is that a lot of us feel that we are, we are, as educators in this country, we're going down a road that we're no longer comfortable with. And we need to make some changes in order to what we think is best for children. So there is a real urgency to our work. And it isn't as though school boards in Fairfax County have not done this process before. We've done it numerous times before, but it is, it's critical that we do this again now and do it very well and get it right, because a large organization does its best work when it's aligned, and when it's aligned all the way through. But this isn't to say that in five, 10 years, another board, another group of people will do this again, because a strategic plan has to be an organic, living thing. We get it right, and then you have to return to it to see what has changed, so that this kind of an exercise is critical, and it is probably very critical right now, I think, because of our own frustrations. So thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Garza, for kicking us down the road this far in such a short period of time. And thank you, Mr. Paris. I absolutely understood everything that was presented. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Durnett-Kofax?
Thank you, Dan. I just wanted to echo Ms. Reed's comments that I appreciate you getting this done in a strategically short time to move forward at this point. I look forward to seeing who the vendor is. And also, I do want to just, as my, I know Mr. Velkoff and I, when we kind of were talking about this when we first got on the board, we, and people were saying, well, we had a strategic initiative, and we have strategic guidance, but he was always like, but we know we want to get to California, but which stops along the way that we need to make. I think that was your, your thing. And I think if we all continue to look at it that way, and then it becomes our working document, it becomes the way we work, it becomes ingrained in our culture, it becomes in the way we think. And so when we have new ideas that are brought to the forum, that are brought to, you know, that we all think up, the constituents bring to us, we have to look at that working document, and then we have to say, how is that going to fit in to this plan that we've already adopted? And when can it fit in? And I think that will help us all. And I'm so glad that we are here and now and at this point, and I can't wait to get started.
Okay, before I, I think I may have the last word, but Ms. McLaughlin, you have a quick go-back? Oh, and so does.
Yeah, my go-back is in response to something Dr. Garza raised, and I really wanted to make sure my colleagues understood where my concern is. As a community advocate and a parent, I do agree that I represent an important stakeholder group, or that the business community, parents are important, absolutely students. But I really am troubled to even think for a second that our teachers wouldn't warrant being listed and identified at that very top tier, along with our principals and leadership team. And I think that's what troubles me with this conversation so much. I'm not asking to go back and rewrite the RFP and, you know, make this seem like a bigger deal, but when I start to hear teachers lumped in with parents, students, and business leaders, and any other community groups that we would deem important, if I were a teacher, I would really start to wonder how valuable my voice is compared to principals and leadership team, when they're right there on the front lines. The, the professionals in our school system who work directly with students every single day, and I just worry as a system and as a board, what we communicate to teachers if we say, well, of course, we met you, and we'll consider you, you know, and include you going forward, along with all these other stakeholder groups. But I think if we just choose as a system to list leadership team and list principals by title or by group, I just would have been more comfortable that the teachers are kind of that triad, and then, you know, and of course, all other community stakeholder groups. And I think that point was being missed.
Ms. McLaughlin, we've covered this issue, so. Okay, it's in next steps. Ms. Hines? Okay. So the, there are two things that I was sort of hoping to see, either as a part of the RFP, or maybe just in covering the objectives. And one is, and I think that Dr. Garza, well, I know Dr. Garza and I have talked about this, and I think that you and I have talked about this, is the moving from sort of systemic randomness to systemic intentionality. And that there is that thread that we're looking for of the K to 12 all the way through. Is there a way that that's going to be reflected when we finally do sit down with a vendor? Is it that we do some things in some places really, really well, but we don't have a way, there isn't a duplicative, you know, communication model to say, hey, over here in this whatever, this elementary school, this, you know, this middle school principal, the way they work with their community is excellent, and this is something that should be replicated throughout the system?
Taking things that work to scale? Yeah, absolutely. And I think in absence of having a very clear, identified focus, I like the way you described it in your first statement about focused intentionality, you know? I think that's the very reason we need a very specific, well-articulated plan.
So, I mean, I just didn't hear anything. I mean, and that's sort of, I think, part of the humility here is acknowledging that there's some things that we don't do great. And, and if we're not doing it well, this is, this is aspirationally what we'd like to achieve, is moving from that randomness in some places in the division to a systemic intentionality. And then the other thing was, I sort of see the stovepipe of the Portrait of a Graduate on the one side, which is the reflection of. on the one side, which is the reflection of what we want a student to be achieving at kindergarten, at third grade, at eighth grade, you know, ultimately, at 12th grade. But the other piece is sort of the, I don't know whether you would call it the skeleton, or the infrastructure piece that goes around that, which is the division itself, and what that strategic image of the division is going to look like in order to support the concept of what a graduate's going to look like. So what does infrastructure look like? What does, what is our staffing, like our, the role of teachers and instructional assistants, and how does, how does the leadership team, or how do clusters, how does all of that, you know, that kind of skeleton to the body that is the student population, how we want them to look at as a graduate? How does that change strategically, long-term? Because, of course, that's where, you know, some of the real difficulties are, you know, budget-wise, and maybe that's a little bit of, I don't know who said, bring, marry the budget in, into this, is it's not so much the budget itself, it's just, you know, how do you, how do you look strategically, long-term, at the division itself, and how it will marry with what we're doing around the work of Portrait of Graduate?
I think that's the ultimate question, right? Is if we're very clear about what outcomes we want to achieve for our students, then we have to wrestle with how do we design ourselves, or redesign ourselves, or rethink the work in all those different components to achieve those outcomes? Or how do we deploy resources, for example? And everything's a resource, even our human resources, right? So I think that's the ultimate question, is what do we look like in, you know, three years, four years, five years, to accomplish those outcomes?
Right, and I know we think that, I'm just saying that it's as if, you know, it's thought, but not manifested in terms of anything that we're presenting. So it's just, you know, at the end of the day, when we sit down with the vendor, and we start talking about putting these things out to the public as a part of the strategic plan with the vendor, and addressing Ms. Hines and Ms. McLaughlin's concerns on stakeholders, that we also talk about the fact that the Portrait of Graduate isn't just about the student, and what that we want the student population to be at, but when they leave FCPS, but how we structure the division to match that focus, so.
So I think there are, just quickly on that piece, there are four places that'll help you move from the aspirational, which I think we've been pretty aspirational, to the operational or intentional, right? And they, in this notion of the theory of change, you have these four components. What is the evidence that you would accept, as a broader community, that we're delivering what we need to with students? That's one, clarity there. The second area is around the strategies and how you build them out, so the commitment to a three- to five-year period, and what everybody's responsibility is within that. And the final area is clarifying this strategic direction and tactical autonomy, and what, you know, latitude that teachers and teams and schools have to make those strategies work. So if you're clear in those four areas, it helps you be intentional about your work.
Anything else, Mr. Paris?
Come here.
Any other next steps, other than the one, Dr. Garza? Okay, we're, I made up five minutes. So, more broadly defined stakeholder groups with identified vendor to specifically include teachers, parents, and I would say, and others, and others as, you know, as the board defines, or something there, too. Any agreement? Okay, nodding, that's the will of the board, and Mr. Moon, you have a motion for us to go into a closed session?
Isn't that part of next step, rather than discussion? Okay, okay, I'm trying to see whether I was reading that right. All right, the board will now make a motion to go into a closed meeting to discuss and consider the employment and performance of a specific public officer and specific public employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1. Vowed by Mr. Schultz, and seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, will be on the fifth floor, and, fifth floor.
The Vienna Patch has breaking news.
We're not coming back down here, so we will start in 10 minutes.
The Vienna Patch has breaking news on weather again.